Public applicants and members of Planning Commission for being here. I will call to order the monthly regular meeting of the Rappahannan County Planning Commission, Wednesday, September fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. I want to acknowledge Ms. Summers, our zoning administrator. Appreciate all of her work and preparingness for the meeting. And also Ms. Lee, who takes notes during these sometimes unwieldy meetings. So our great appreciation to all of them. We do have everyone present. If you would please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next is the adoption of the agenda, and I would like to propose two changes, please. And after that, we'd entertain a motion, and hopefully you will agree with my proposed changes. The first is, we have tonight five special use permit application preliminary reviews. And I would like to move to the first position, the application, the special use permit application for Jenkins, which is SUP number twenty-one dash zero-nine dash zero-four. So move that into the first position. I believe there, Ms. Summers, are there five or four? Five, okay. Oh, yep, I didn't skip to the other page. So if we could put Jenkins first, please. And then the second change I'd like to make to the agenda very quickly. I would like to move the informational section to come immediately after the adoption of the minutes. And I will explain why once we get there. But I will be seeking approval from the Planning Commission to retain the Berkeley Group. And I think we can knock that out quickly at the beginning to help us advance the sign ordinance and the event ordinance provisions that we've been talking about for so long. So with that, I would entertain a motion to adopt the agenda with those two proposed changes, please.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Light, Mr. Kohler, second. Any discussion? Thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, the next on our agenda is the adoption of the minutes. I wanted to thank Ms. Ishi for her thorough review of the minutes and to try to make sure that everyone had a full view of her proposed changes. She did send those out to everyone. Hopefully you had a chance to look at them. Her edits supersede my own and go beyond that is that I had. I don't know if anyone had any additional comments on either Ms. Ishi's proposed edits or any additional edits beyond hers. I would entertain a motion to adopt the minutes, including Ms. Ishi's edits, for both the August eleventh, two thousand and twenty-one special meeting and the August eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-one regular meeting of the Planning Commission. Mr. Kohler?
I'll second.
And Mr. Sharp, any discussion? Thank you. All those in favor say aye. Aye, thank you very much. As, as mentioned, I wanted to just briefly talk with you all about the possibility of retaining the Berkeley Group, which, for the public's interest, is an outside land use and planning consulting firm. And the purpose there is to get them to help us advance our, our work on both the sign ordinance initially and then also our broader review of all of the various disparate sections of our zoning ordinance related to events. And what I am seeking is a motion from the Planning Commission. We do have an existing agreement with the Berkeley Group. So this is within the parameters of our, our existing retainer group with the Berkeley Group. We do have funds that have been allocated by the Board of Supervisors of the Planning Commission. And I'm just seeking the go-ahead to work with staff to retain the Berkeley Group for no more than ten thousand dollars in total fees to help us advance both the sign ordinance and the event-related provisions of our zoning ordinance. And that's up to ten thousand dollars. And they're, they bill hourly. And I apologize, I'm having to look at my phone because I just got the details before our meeting. They bill hourly, and I believe a hundred and forty dollars an hour. So I believe that within the ten thousand dollars specified, we should be able to get a lot of work done there. I know Mr. Goff has done quite a lot of work on the, on the sign ordinance, but I think getting some outside help will move it more quickly. So again, that's just to, to give me the okay to work with staff to, to get the Berkeley Group working on those two subject areas.
So these are funds that have already been allocated by the Board of Supervisors?
Yeah, we have, I believe we have twenty thousand dollars in our budget for this type of outside, outside help.
And for this calendar budget year, we haven't used none of the funds?
We have not, yeah.
I'll be happy to move that.
Okay, thank you.
Offer as you to do as you said, ten thousand dollars to retain the Berkeley Group for those purposes.
Okay, great. And do I have a second for Ms. Ishi's motion? Mr. Kohler, thank you. Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I guess I, I, maybe this is clear in the agreement, but I just want to make it sure that it is clear, and this could be part of the, the directive in your dealing with staff, that I think for these things to be successful, there needs to be a clear overseer. And I assume that would be the county administrator?
Who would be?
Who, who would, who would be the ultimate director and kind of project manager for this? So as long as that is clear in the, in the discussion and everyone's comfortable with that, this would certainly get my support. I just want to make sure that we're making effective use of the resource.
That's exactly right. And for those of you who were on the Planning Commission during the comprehensive planning work, you'll recall that Berkeley Group did come in and assist you under what's called a work order within the parameters of their ongoing agreement. So this would be basically a work order for those two tasks, up to ten thousand dollars.
Thank you for that clarification.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye, thank you very much. Okay, we're six minutes in. We're moving well here. All right. We'll see. All right, there are no public hearings on the agenda for tonight, but we do have a public comment period. And the one thing I wanted to say is that we have five special use permit applications. If anyone in the, in the audience is a member of the public who's not an applicant, who would like to comment on any of our special use permit applications, which tonight are subject to a preliminary review, this public comment period would be your only opportunity to do so. If you're an applicant, once we get to your application, then we would, of course, hear from you in the context of your own permit application review. So I will go ahead and open the public comment period. And this is a general public comment period for anything any member of the public might want to say. Yes? What, yeah, so if you are a member of the public and not the applicant, this would be an opportunity to comment on any of the applications that are before us or anything else that you might want to discuss. If you're an applicant, you'll have a chance once we get to your application. If you could just come up here, sure, yep. Go ahead. And, and if just your name and the voting district within which you reside?
I'm in the Jackson District. I own Golden Tree for Canines Dog Training. I have been in business eleven years. I've lived in the county since nineteen eighty-nine, owned land since nineteen eighty-six. I am about a mile from the applicant, Mrs. Wagner, who is looking to open a special, or a boarding facility. I think it's deemed as a kennel in this instance, but she's not actually doing boarding like I am. So two separate businesses. I have worked with her for about six years now. And I highly recommend that she is allowed to do this facility in the county. I don't see where it would interrupt anything, her hours that I've read in the, in the minutes that she wrote or the agenda, um, application. Are very reasonable for neighbors. I, I mean, I'm open until ten o'clock at night, and I have had no complaints. Of course, I have a very soundproofed building. But for what she's doing, for the dog training facility, I think the hours that she's proposing is, is very good. So I highly recommend that we give her the chance to do business within our county.
Great, thank you. Very, very good input. Thank you. Anyone else, a general public comment? Yes, sir?
Lauren Willstand, Wakefield. I'd like to second her opinion in all aspects. We're struck by the professionalism, attention to detail. That's about all I have to say. Thank you much.
Okay, great. Thank you. Anyone else wishing to comment?
Terry Basian, Amosville, I believe. I don't know where, where the district is. Just recently started training with Charlotte. Fantastic. She got a supporter for a new, her facility, and she'll do a great job, I know. And she's also, her training has just been recognized for Northern Virginia. A real high honor, number one in Northern Virginia. So it's a good organization.
Great, thank you. Yes, sir?
Hi, my name's Tony Trujillo, and I've lived out here for about thirty years. And I've known Charlotte since she was four years old. And in some ways, we share the same love for dogs. And as, from where I sit, I keep on hearing in the county there are no job opportunities and there's a lack of opportunity in general for the next generation coming. And I see this as a generational opportunity for Charlotte and people her age and younger than I am. And also for the possibility that there's employment opportunities here, perhaps. Who knows what will happen in the future. So low density, low density, low traffic, good economic opportunities for the county. Thank you.
Great, thanks very much for your comments. And you just gave her age away, by the way, so. The math was easy to do. All right, anyone else? Okay, great. I will close the public comment period. Okay, we are now on to new business. And just, some, we'll call them ground rules and parameters. We have five applications tonight. This is a preliminary review for all five applications. And so the Planning Commission has four possible courses of action here. Number one, if the Planning Commission deems an application incomplete or there's information that's so significant to the approval of the application and, and more time is needed to gather that information for the applicant to respond, then the application could be moved to our next regular meeting, which would be in October. The second course of action would be to schedule a public hearing, which would also be in the, during the October monthly meeting. And that would be based on a, a review of a complete application and then simply a recommendation to schedule a public hearing. And that's particularly relevant when you have neighbors who might want to come and comment more robustly in advance of a possible approval application. And then the remaining two courses of action would be just to make a straight recommendation for approval to the Board of Zoning Appeals, which is the body that hears special use permit applications, finally, after the Planning Commission's recommendation, or a recommendation for denial to the Board of Zoning Appeals. So those are the four possible courses of action. And I would just ask the members of the Planning Commission, given we have five applications and given that this is a preliminary review, and you can see that the files are quite, quite full of material for each of the applications that we move thoroughly but expeditiously through each one. And ideally, if we could just hear from Ms. Summers to get a brief intro, and then from the applicant or the applicant's counsel. And then finally, from Planning Commission members. And then we'll try to wrap it up and take some course of action along the four courses I described at the outset. So we will, having, having amended the agenda, the first special use permit application that we are going to hear is, again, preliminary review of SUP number twenty-one dash zero-nine dash zero-four Jenkins, Tax Map forty-eight dash twenty-three. This is an application for a tourist home. And if you could just briefly walk us through the, the file.
Mr. Chairman, could I just make a quick response to what you just said? And I appreciate it. I don't want to take a lot of time here. And I appreciate what, what you just went through, and I think that's correct. I would like to reiterate again my concern that we should consider changing our ordinance so that we don't have preliminary reviews, that we, that we just go straight to a public hearing format. And my only concern with that, what we have already, is that we have a preliminary review, which doesn't notify the public very well that there's actually, that it could be moved ahead without a hearing before the Planning Commission. And so the public doesn't necessarily show up to give their input. So we, we try to take what we consider simple applications and just move them forward to a BZA so the applicant doesn't have to suffer through a number of different hearings. But we don't always know what the complications are without input from the public. So I just, while I regret that, yes, we have this extra step, this preliminary review, and it sometimes makes applicants and the public have to come in more times than we would wish, I think that that's, it's important to have a public hearing opportunity as long as our ordinance suggests that we are going to have a public hearing opportunity, which it does. So I just would like to make that point, but I appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. And that might, that might be a good question for the Berkeley Group, actually, to, to look at other localities and how they, how they handle this, so.
I have one thing to add to that. I would think, just to amplify that a little bit, if you don't have a public hearing, I don't think it's necessarily appropriate to forward a recommendation for denial or approval. So I think there's that other option where maybe you just forward it without a recommendation.
Which we've done previously on kind of no-brainer type tourist home applications.
Mr. Chairman, I think our present system is working fine. And it recognizes the very simple applications that we get that are no brainers, and we can pass them on. And if there's more detail, we, we can address it, so.
Okay.
If it's not broke, let's not play with it.
Okay, great. Thanks for your input.
Since we're going down the line, I'll agree with the parties who say it is broke. And I agree with Ms. Ishi and Mr. Sharp.
Okay, great. Thank you. With that?
So now, Mr. Whitson, one more question.
Sure.
In terms of Mr. Sharp standing here in the meeting, if he's no longer a BZA member, what is his standing here on the Planning Commission?
That's a good question. So we faced this last year, actually, during the calendar year. There is an individual who is serving on the Board of Zoning Appeals, who was appointed to the Planning Commission as the Board of Zoning Appeals rep. That person was not reappointed to the Board of Zoning Appeals with some, some months left in the calendar year. And we, just for the sake of continuity and lack of disruption, just let that individual remain on the Planning Commission for the remainder of the year.
Now, that case was a little bit different than this case. In that case, he was not reappointed. In this case, Mr. Sharp resigned.
Right.
So resignation from one should be resignation from both. So I think that's something, we can't address it tonight, but something the county attorney?
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll go ahead and ask the county attorney for an opinion on that.
Yeah, I think that's a good question. I, I do note that we don't seem to
Poor guy.
completely follow the ordinance exactly in some of the ways we've been doing it. But I do note that it's, it's discretionary with the board to appoint somebody from the BZA. And frankly, it's discretionary to appoint somebody from different magisterial districts. But anyway, I think it's a good idea to have that.
It's a, it's a good question, and, and I'll follow up with the county attorney, and we'll find out before our next meeting. And just for the benefit of the public, Mr. Sharp was serving on the BZA, had his step down because he also serves on the Rappahannan County Water and Sewer Authority. He's a BZA representative on the Planning Commission. And so the question is whether he can continue on the Planning Commission for the rest of this year. So we'll, we'll get an opinion. I appreciate the question. Any other comments? Okay, great. Ms. Summers, if you could introduce the Jenkins special use permit application. Thank you.
Mr. Jenkins, this is for a three-bedroom tourist home, which we want in one seventy thirty-sixty and one seventy sixty-six K. The property is located at two ninety-three Yancey Road.
Would you be willing to talk into the microphone or a microphone? Just because they're recording, I want to make sure that you're
We don't have an extra one.
Okay, can you talk into that one or? Thank you. Sorry. Or bring it over. Just take it over to your seat. There you go. Thanks.
Mr. Jenkins has proposed to operate a three-bedroom tourist home. Located at two ninety-three Yancey Road. The property is zoned agricultural and is sixty acres in size. The Health Department commented that the septic system was permitted in nineteen ninety-seven for four bedrooms. The permit shows that a main dwelling and a cabin are both connected to the septic system. The applicant is proposing to use the main dwelling for a tourist home serving six people, which would equal a standard three-bedroom septic capacity. The total occupancy of the two structures combined should not exceed eight people total. And they have no objections to the request.
Okay, and Mr. Brown, I understand that you're going to, to speak on behalf of the applicant?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Very briefly.
Thank you.
Michael Brown's behalf of the applicant. Please, if this is your thinking as well, any questions?
Sorry about that.
We have reviewed the staff report and have no disagreement or objections with Ms. Summers' summary. There are numerous photographs that got posted to Board Docs today. That was attributable to my delay in getting them to Ms. Summers that really give you a fair assessment of what this property is all about. It's a, it's got a beautiful old home on it. That's the three-bedroom structure that the applicant would propose to use in connection with the tourist home. There is, and you have a picture of a cabin also on the property that is hooked into the same septic and drain field system that Ms. Summers referenced. That is not part of this application. That would not be used as part of the tourist home at this time. So if the, if later the Jenkins family improved that cabin and, and wanted to add that, they would need to come back for an amendment to the special permit. That, that's the one I'm referring to. The application is fairly self-explanatory. The neighbors to the north, Dr. Monye and Mr. Richmond are aware of this. They're in support of it. The neighbors adjoining to the west, whose names just flew out of my head, are also aware of it and in support. And Eldon Farms, Mr. Geno is aware of it and has indicated his support. And, and then the Jenkins Orchard, of course, is also just across the road. So we've ticked all the boxes in the application materials. I think we've addressed all the, the general and the additional standards. Happy to answer any questions that the commission members might have.
Okay, thanks for that presentation. I'll go ahead and, and open it to the Planning Commission members if anyone has any questions or comments on the application. And go in whatever order you choose.
I'll go first.
Thank you.
Mr. Jenkins, thank you for coming tonight. I reckon that is that you're one of the last three people in Rappahannan County that grows apples. So thank you for doing that.
Thank you, yes.
You've got a beautiful property there across the road, selling fresh fruit to the people. I've been on this property twice in the last year. I think this, this property here is, when we speak of a tourist home in Rappahannan County, if everyone could be like this, it would be wonderful. You've got sixty acres. The house is back off the road. There's really no neighbors. It's surrounded by nice trees. The property has a view of the mountains. No improvements need to be made. Site, have good site distance on, on Yancey Road. Mr. Jenkins is across the road to look after the property, to handle any issues. So it, it's, it's a wonderful thing. Thank you for buying the property next door to you. And this will supplement his income as a, as a farming operation. So I think it's a win-win for everybody. I don't see any issues here.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yes, I guess I'd like to add one additional benefit that Mr. Henry didn't. But I totally agree with what he said. I think these older homes that are a little outdated with, to, to kind of modern standards are also sometimes tough to, you know, ma- keep maintained. And that this provides an income stream to do it, to me, is another indication of the, of the positive aspects of this in keeping these, these older structures viable. So agree with everything, plus that.
Great. Anyone else?
Well, I would agree with both speakers. I think it's a very positive use and a good location for it.
Thank you. I, I, I have a technical question. Based on the Health Department's comments and, and the fact that the little cabin is not in the application. Is, sort of, you have a, a, a septic perk for four bedrooms, and it's a four-bedroom home that you're converting now to the Airbnb. Is that correct?
It's an approval for a four, it's a four-bedroom perk. There are three bedrooms in the house, one bedroom in that separate cabin that will not be used in connection with this tourist home.
Will it be, but it will be used?
It's not, that the cabin is not happening.
I see. So, but anyway, you have enough bedrooms. You have, you, I'm sorry, you have enough, it's a four-bedroom perk, and you have only three bedrooms in the, in the main house and one bedroom in the cabin.
Right, and the tourist home application is for just a three-bedroom, six-person occupancy in the main house.
Okay, yeah, that's fine. I don't see any major problems with this either. I, I, I know, and I, I don't, that we've had a lot of discussion or some discussion about tourist homes in general, which are appealing to people because they're easy to rent out and maybe in some ways easier than, than a real, a, a, a long-term rental property. But we have had some discussion about whether this does, the, the impact on this on long-term rental properties in our county and affordable housing issues. So I, I don't know if we'll do it on this one or not. But I think we should consider, as a general principle, having tourist homes permits expire in a, a period of time just so we can have a sense of what the impact is on the county and the impact on the, on the neighbors. So like a three- or five-year standard time period for, for tourist homes would, in my opinion, be a generally good idea. This one seems, appears to be a, you know, a very viable tourist home situation and, and not a lot of concerns, but just to throw that out.
Great, thank you. Yeah, and I agree. I think the, the broader question of tourist homes and any adverse effect on our community as a whole is a valid line of inquiry, and it's something we should definitely address at some point. Any, any other comments on this specific application? Okay, does anyone want, oh, I'm sorry.
I do. I was just going to give my other commissioners a first bite before I took a second bite.
Okay.
If not, I'll take the second bite.
At the apple, at the Jenkins?
Yes, at the Jenkins apple. Thank you. I, I didn't even catch that myself. I noticed the staff report suggests that the permit terminates upon the sale or transfer of the property, which seems to be something we've added. I personally agree that for something like this, where it's a question of, you know, the long-term cumulative impact of these things into our, our rental and residential markets, does make it more of a time. I, I feel like a time duration limit makes more sense in this case than a transfer limit. But that's the only thing I would, I would add. We didn't really discuss that element of the, of the staff report. But I noticed that does seem to be showing up in most of these, in most of these staff reports about tourist homes.
Okay, thank you.
I, I would disagree that the transfer, the restriction on transfer, you know, permit, a permit to expire at transferring is more problematic, I think, for a lot of reasons. I, I think there's a, it's a little bit questionable how, how, how strong a legal case we would have for that. Not that I'm acting as attorney. I think that's something for, for Mr. Goff to address. But I think there, it's pretty clear that we can put a time limitation on it, and that's just an easier way to go. We're going to do that.
Good.
Well, I agree that maybe it's up to the county attorney to make that kind of determination. I am all in favor of it terminating upon transfer. I've seen horrible things happen to friends' places in Loudoun County. I don't want to see it happen here. He knows his neighbors. His neighbors know him. They get somebody else in there on the same operating type agreement. It's a different, it's a different, it's, it's, he's not going to rent the same one.
Really good point.
I think if the property is sold outside the family, if it goes to an LLC within Mr. Jenkins' family, to other family members, his son or somebody has, and they set up an LLC, that's fine. If it's, if it's a transfer to a third party outside the family, it should terminate then. And, you know, this, this talk about terminating use here, I, I think, you know, this is United States of America. We've got property rights, and we've granted the property right to everybody that's come in here to, to do a tourist home with no limits on, on time. And now, all of a sudden, we're, we're expecting the landowners to solve the affordability problem and rental problem in this county, to put it squarely on their back with their property. And I, I think we're, we're stepping outside of our bounds there. I think we need to treat Mr. Jenkins the way we've treated all the other applicants before him and give him a permit, recommend an approval for a permit that doesn't have an expiration unless he sells it.
Yeah.
To do anything other than that, I, I, I think we're taking away a right that everybody else has, and now we say he can't have.
And that is the staff's recommendation? So I'd be inclined to stick with that. Any other, any other comments?
I, I certainly don't want to take away anybody's rights that somebody else has. But I, I, I have to push back on the idea that we don't limit applications for tourist homes or permits for tourist homes. We've placed extensive limits on many tourist home applications, even during the time I've been on the Planning Commission. So I, I, that is a squarely a, a, a term that, that many jurisdictions, including ours, have, have put on tourist home permit applications. And I, I don't want to, again, I think the application that's before us is a, is a good application. But there's, it, it is a special use permit application, and that is our job to put appropriate limitations on things. Otherwise, it would be a by-right use. So I, I, I'm not sure that, I'm not sure that an argument of property rights is the right argument here. I think the, the right question is what's appropriate for this particular permit and this particular property. So I think that, and, and the, the question of how we, how we structure our ordinance so that we provide for affordable housing is squarely a zoning question and something that, in fact, the, the Virginia Code requires us to look at.
Well, and I think that, and I agree that the affordable housing question, I've said it many times, when you're talking about smaller properties and they become tourist homes, they're taken out of inventory for locals to rent or to own. And I think that right now, our ordinance is written in such a way that the minimum acreage keeps the smaller properties in that inventory. You're raising broader questions, and it's all important. But I'd like to move forward on this application if we uh, but I'd like to move forward on this application if we could.
Sorry, but I need to comment. I, if it's possible, I think I agree with both of you. I think the issue is we don't make this decision in the context of a specific application or it would seem that we're, you know, biased against a particular application. But I think to Ms. Ish's broader point, it is absolutely in our authority and our responsibility to consider the cumulative impact of, of these uses to the broader community benefit. And I think that's what's been recommended and discussed with that on. Prepared to move on.
Okay. Um, does anyone wish to put forward a motion here on this application?
Yeah, I'll go ahead and put forward a motion. Um, you know, I don't really generally like the idea of putting these things forward with a recommendation without a hearing, but in this case, I think this does qualify as something close to a slam dunk. So, I would move that we, uh, forward this to whichever the relevant party is.
Board of Zoning Appeals.
With recommendation to, uh, approve.
Okay, so that's a motion to, to put this application to the Board of Zoning Appeals.
And I'll add with the, with the conditions as recommended in the staff report.
Recommendation for approval with the conditions outlined in the staff report. Is there a second for Ms.?
A second.
Who was that?
Me.
Okay, thank you, Brian. Okay. Any further discussion?
Only that I, I will have to oppose it, not because I'm opposing the applicant, just because, again, I think it's inappropriate to move it forward in a public hearing.
Great. Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Um, so, Mr. Jenkins, um, this has been moved to the Board of Zoning Appeals, um, with a recommendation for approval. And Mr. Brown can walk you through that, but the Board of Zoning Appeals will have a public hearing on it, but you're done here, sir. And we appreciate you coming in and hopefully this'll keep you somewhat in the apple business for a long time to come. So, thank you. Yeah, thank you. Okay, moving on. Um, so, next will be a preliminary review of special use permit number twenty-one dash zero-nine dash zero-one, Hubbard Tax Map Number One dash fifty-four A, another application for a tourist home. And Ms. Summers, if you would briefly introduce this application.
I would note the applicant is not present here tonight.
Okay.
Um, but this is for a tourist home located at forty-one Headwaters Road in Chester Gap, tax map number one dash fifty-four A. The property is a village residential. It is one point four acres in size.
Okay. Um, Mr. Shuland, um, since you live in Chester Gap, do you know the location's property? And would you wanna get us started?
I'm familiar with the property, um, 'cause I like to go to yard sales. So, I've been up past it before.
Uh-huh.
Um, it's down near the bottom. Uh, I, I don't know the other, uh, Airbnbs in Chester Gap or closer to the top where they walk up to the trail. I don't know if that's the plan here or not. Um, I have no issues with this application.
And Ms. Summers, um, just a quick review of the file. It looks like the septic system, if I'm reading it correctly, is pretty old.
Yes.
Um, are there any, are there any issues that stand out to you in the application, um, that would raise concern, um, for the contemplated use as a tourist home? And then second, is the applic- is the file complete as far as you're concerned?
Um, the, um, the, the health department doesn't have any comments. We got actually commented, part of that road is state-maintained and part of it isn't and it's right there at it.
At the driveway.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, I wanted to address that particular point, if I may.
Go ahead, Ms. Ray.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Okay. Um, yeah, I drove by this property and it does seem that it, although the address is on, uh, Headwaters Road, it does appear that, that this is beyond the state-maintained part and therefore it strikes me that it would be, I believe, subject to the new standards, the new road standards, type-two road standard.
Yeah.
And it is a pretty steep slope and pretty narrow, uh, structure through there. So, to me, that's the only, uh, question that is a little fuzzy, given the, the orientation of the, the dwelling.
Okay, anyone else?
Ms. Uh, Ms. Summers, this is how we indicate to you she wasn't coming tonight?
No, sir.
I, I think we almost have to hear from her to, to, to address this, to answer any questions that we may have about the road and various items. So, it's difficult to make any direction here without her being here.
Okay. Do you wanna make a motion in this regard?
Uh, Mr. Shuler?
Shuland.
Shuland, you wanna table it for a month?
Should we table it or can we push it to a public hearing? That gives her another opportunity.
One or the other, I think.
Uh, could I, could I just interject? Well, unless he's not finished. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
I'm paused.
Okay, thank you. Um, I also'd like to point out our, our ordinance, the new ordinance. We have some, some requirements in the ordinance, uh, at one sixty, uh, one seventy dash sixty-six K, um, such as the accommodations can't have more than ten transit, ten occupants, transient occupants, um, off-street parking, the minimum acreage, um, the, the road standards. But also in one seventy dash sixty-six K nine, we have a number of criteria that the BZI board can impose as discretionary criteria, su- such as the maximum number of adults permitted at any one time shall not exceed twice the number of lodging units. Um, they have to be notified of applicable noise ordinances. They have to have, um, clearly visible emergency information. Um, they have to have functioning smoke and fire detectors. And also that the operator should provide evidence that he has not less than five hundred thousand dollars of liability insurance unless it's already covered by something like Airbnb. So, it's especially difficult to have, to move this forward to the BZA without even knowing whether we should recommend any of these discretionary provisions. Um, so, again, I just, I just raised the, the fact that I, I wonder why we're even, why these are even coming to us if we're just gonna have them forward.
Okay. So, um, I think it's clear, it's not gonna, it's not going to move beyond the planning commission for another month and it's just a question, um, whether or not we want to schedule a public hearing. Does anybody want to take a shot at a motion?
Well, I, I would just say to Mr. Shuland, if you were so inclined to make that motion, I would be glad to second it, to move it to a public hearing. I, I, you know, I think it is an advantage that, um, you know, the public gets to weigh in and we don't take the risk of having the desire for three steps rather than two. Uh, I think the risk there is if for some reason the applicant doesn't show up next time, we're not quite sure why, but, um, I don't know. I think, Mr. Shuland, your, your suggestion worked well for me.
Great. And then Ms. Summers, um, whatever course we take here, if you can make sure the applicant's here next time, just let her know, it's pretty important. Thank you.
I'd like to move that we, um, push this forward for...
A public hearing?
Public hearing, thank you.
At our regular?
At our next rescheduled meeting.
Okay, great.
I second it.
Well, you just, you just swiped away a second.
It's quite all right.
All right.
I'm happy to see progress.
So, that's a second for Mr. Gole or, and any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Any opposed? Okay. It's hard to keep track. My hearing's not great. Okay, thank you very much, everyone. All right, we are, we are on to, um, welcome to tourist home night. Um, preliminary review, special use permit number twenty-one dash zero-nine dash zero-two, Waller, I hope I'm pronouncing that correctly, tax map number twenty-seven dash fifty-five. This is a special use permit application to operate a tourist home. Ms. Summers, please.
Thank you, yes. Um, Mr. Waller has, um, proposed to operate a three-bedroom tourist home located at one seventeen Old Halla Road. The property's nineteen acres in size and is known agricultural. Um, the health department commented that the septic system was permitted by our office in nineteen sixty-five for three bedrooms and the septic repair was completed in two thousand and ten. They do recommend that an annual, um, same will be done to check the potability of the drinking water. Just look at your own state-maintained grade.
Great. And is the applicant here? Oh, there you are. Okay, great, I know you.
So, I'm representing my dad tonight.
Okay.
So, but...
If you could just tell us your name and where you live.
Uh, Eileen Yalmas, uh, Wayne Waller's daughter. Uh, one-one-seven Old Halla Road, uh, Aspergill.
Great, thank you. Um, do you wanna make any comments about the intended use or, uh?
Yeah, I mean, honestly, it, it pretty much speaks for itself. Um, it is a five-bedroom house. Um, I don't know if I was clear on the application, but I will have a friend who will host and actually live on the property. Um, so, I don't know if, if that will, will be an issue. Um, we will actually not be living in the house. We are moving temporarily out of state.
Okay.
Uh, kinda tr- going to trial this till the end of two thousand twenty-two and then we'll kinda take it from there.
Okay. So, basically, you'll have a full-time person overseeing this operation always?
Yes.
Okay.
Always, 'cause that was really important.
Okay. All right.
Could I ask a question while you're, while you're up?
Sure.
Greetings. I, I believe I recall this as the old Apple Hill, uh, B and B from a long time ago, right? Is that right?
Yes, yes. My dad and my stepmom bought it back in nineteen eighty-nine and called themselves retiring. And, uh, we had a bed and breakfast, I believe, uh, for fifteen years.
Wow.
Yes, I remember, uh, 'cause that's when we had our bed and breakfast. I guess my point is not to just walk down memory lane, but I, I, although that's always a good time. I wondered if the, um, if you could comment, as I recall, there were four, uh, bed and breakfast rooms doled out at that time and somebody at least was living there full-time. So, in terms of the scale of the operation, could you compare this to what was historically done uh, when this was run as a B and B? Is it, it would seem like it's probably less intense than that use.
Oh, for sure. Yeah, uh, because I assisted. But yeah, um, it was a four-bedroom bed and breakfast. Um, my parents had a separate room and, um, yeah, they did it for fifteen years. So, we had no problems and I'm, I'm hoping that because we ran it as a bed and breakfast, um, that we won't have any issues with this application. Um, you know, 'cause I'm hearing a lot about septic and rooms and whatnot. Um, I mean, we've emptied out our septic once in ten years. We've had several occupants. I mean, I'm sure you can appreciate having a B and B, a lot of turnover and it's never been an issue, so.
Thank you. Just wanted to add that bit of history.
Yes.
Um, any questions from anyone on the planning commission?
Uh, just to be clear, your, your friend is gonna be living there a hundred percent of the time.
Yes, sir. A single lady with one, one dog.
Yep. Anyone?
Well, one thing that is interesting about this, you still have a bed and breakfast permit, I guess, right? They don't go away.
I believe they do if they go out of use for two years.
I don't think so.
No?
No.
Others might.
Michelle, do you know the rule?
I don't think they, I mean, it's not a non-conforming use. So, I, I believe that the permits just last forever.
That would be amazing.
But anyway, I just think that's interesting because they don't terminate in two years. That's just if it was a, um, non-conforming use.
Yeah, and I, I've discussed, um, well, I let Cliff Miller know this evening. Um, his property bets up against ours. Um, I have let, uh, Carl Payne, who's behind us, um, the Pagluskis, which are right next door. I mean, we've coexisted with our neighbors very peacefully for the last thirty years and, hmm, you know, we've been upstanding citizens. We've had several businesses in the community and so.
I, I think this is a, a good point that Mr. Sharp raises because, uh, I, I think either way, it's, we should probably approve this, but if it was an Airbnb, uh, and you have somebody living there and you're going to be, I mean, usually a tourist home is rented in its entirety. I think we now have definitions of that effect and not to get too wrapped up in definitions, but this sounds a little bit more like a Airbnb. So, if you already have the permit for a Airbnb, I'm wondering if that wouldn't be an easier way to just continue this, what you wanna do and, and save us all the trouble.
Um, then I could still operate as an Airbnb.
Theoretically. Theoretically, I, I, I'm not, I'm not trying to get very...
So, 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 before we go down this dual road here, well, before we go down this dual road, but, uh, let's, let's, let's give, maybe make a decision tonight what to do and if she has, still has a permit for, uh, the B and B and that's the way you wanna go, Merry Christmas and you won't have to deal with this. But, you know, if, if that's not the case, then you can move on to the next step next month.
All right.
I, I agree that, that's a prudent approach.
Um, Michelle, when you, when you get applications like this, do you look at the address and see if there are any other existing permits? I know there's a, there was one up in, um, Get Brown Hollow, way up at the top. Um, and they came in for a special use permit for a tourist home, but it was already permitted as a B and B in perpetuity and so they didn't have to change anything.
Except we're gonna don't go back and check the...
Okay, all right. So, I, I think Mr. Henry's right. So, we'll just keep, keep the trains moving on time here. And then if, if there's some existing permit on the record that allows you to do what you wanna do, then that would probably be the best way to go and you could avoid
And then bypass.
Having to go through the Board of Zoning Appeals and all that stuff. So, we'll figure that out.
And the Board of Supervisors.
Well, it's not Board of Supervisors-type applications. It's to the Board of Zoning Appeals. Yep, we have a bifurcated process here. So, does someone wanna go ahead and make a motion?
Well, I, if I may.
Yep, go ahead.
From our district, if you don't mind. Um, I, I, I wanna say, um, you know, your family has done amazing things in the community and you're just, have been in so many ways such a wonderful addition. And I'm very sorry to hear that you're thinking of moving to Florida, even temporarily. And I agree that this is a, um, totally appropriate use for this property. Um, you know, to the extent that we have tourist homes at all, this is, this is a, this is a good place for it. The B and B, I had friends stay there. It was, it was lovely. Y'all did a great job there. Um, there are some slight differences between the bed and breakfast, um, and the tourist home provisions, primarily that the bed and breakfast has to have a resident manager, so a lot of people don't wanna have to do that. But since you are already doing that, um, that's worth looking at. I think, um, as you've alluded to, the only potential holdup, I mean, glitch, if there is a glitch here, is the fact that you've got a septic approval for three bedrooms and you've got a five-bedroom house and you're gonna have one person living in it. The easy way around that, even if you did do a tourist home, is just to say, um, you've got a, a guest occupancy limit of, of six, um, and then you, you're well with, close enough within it. Um, and that's certainly a condition that could be added to it. Um, but, um, otherwise, I think it's, it's a lovely property and I would certainly wanna stay there. Um, and I wish you the very best with that. But, um, I, before, uh, I would like, also, I think though, again, I believe that, that these should be set for a public hearing. I don't think we're gonna have any opposition at all to, um, to your application, but I, I think the public ought to be given that opportunity to be notified of it. So, I would like to move, after my colleagues have a chance to add anything if they want, that, that we just move this to a public hearing and hopefully that would be a, an easy one and, um, we could suggest conditions to be imposed at that time. Um, uh, but if that motion failed, then I would suggest the condition that it have an occupancy limit of six.
Including children?
That would be, according to, according to Medge, that they don't differentiate between children and adults. So, when she says that it's supposed to have an occupancy limit of six, she means six.
It, did, did she in fact, um, state a limitation on her comments? Or is that just your, going off of your own recommendation?
No, she, she, she says it's, it, it can accommodate six. No, she, she, she says it's, it, it can accommodate six, so, and I spoke with her today and she indicated that that means six. Um.
No, and and I do, and I, and I've worked with Medge and I do mean this respectfully, but again, you know. We operated a bed and breakfast for multiple years, um, and I just, I'm again hoping that you guys. Don't place a limitation on it because we were already proved before, why would you wanna change that now? You know, why, what's different now? Cuz we still had a three-bedroom septic back when we had a bed and breakfast and again, we had four rooms we were renting. And my mother and my father were living there. For, you know, full-time, so that, you know, and again, it's disrespectful, but I just wanted to make that point.
Yep.
And hopefully it'll help the cause.
Thank you, so Ms. issues made a motion to schedule a public hearing at the planning commission at our regular October meeting, is there a second? Uh, motion fails for a second, does someone else, uh, wanna make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion that we pass it on to the BCA, uh, with a recommendation of approval, addressing the septic, uh, system. Uh, and capacity, and with the comments from the staff.
Okay, that's a, uh, recommendation to send to the BCA, uh, for approval or with a recommendation for approval? Is there a second for Mr. Henry's motion?
I'd hear the whole motion.
Go ahead, Al.
Uh, make a motion that we, uh, send it to the BCA with a recommendation of approvals, subject to the, uh, comments by staff. And subject to BCA addressing the septic, uh, and capacity, occupancy pa- capacity of the house.
Can I just ask, is that to to include the recommendations from the staff report?
Yes, I said that, said it twice.
Okay, it's a motion.
And I would recommend to you that if you have a B and B. Uh, a permit now.
I had no idea.
You might wanna just look into that a little more.
Well, we're, yeah, I mean, Michelle's going to look into that on our end and and we'll get a clear answer, is there a second for Mr. Henry's motion?
Uh, I'll second the motion.
Okay, any discussion?
I I guess I would just maybe state the obvious, that now you see why if you already have a permit, you've probably, uh, better served to, uh. You know, relying on that one.
Well, understood, but you know, we're all reasonable, so I'm sure we can come up.
I I I agree and I appreciate.
I'm reasonable, I think y'all know that, most of you.
Miss Summers, so the staff, the staff recommend, the recommended condition for a maximum of six people stems from. The Virginia Department of Health recommendation, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, so that was not, that, that recommendation came from Ms. Carter to us and it's in here and.
Oh, and and I understand, and I did do a little investigation on Airbnbs and what's local. And, cuz I I don't wanna throw anybody under the bus, cuz that's certainly not my intent.
Yeah.
But like, there is, and and this might be because they're off a town septic, but I think there's a four-bedroom, two-bath Airbnb. And when you go on Airbnb, it it says you can have four adults and three children. And I would think that would be seven, so if you have, you know, two bathrooms, that would go over that, then there's another farm. Um, similar situation, um, again, you know, if you're going off of bathrooms and septic. It seems like they are, I I wanna say eight adults, maybe three children. So you, if you see where I'm going with it.
Yep.
I, 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 cuz it would, it would, it just seemed like it's not, um.
Yeah, and if this moves on to the BCA, I think it would be, um, I mean, it would be worthwhile to talk, talk with Ms. Carter and just.
Understand it better.
Get all your ducks in a row, because the BCA will have a public hearing, um, and so that would be a good opportunity to kind of state your case very. Definitively, and then perhaps between now and then, you can get some additional information, explanation from Ms. Carter. And she, she can decide whether there's any additional wiggle room at all, but your points are well taken.
Could, could I just add a comment, I, I appreciate where you're going, but the fact that there could be other people who are not complying is hardly an argument. To me, the question is, and this is what we struggle with, is what is the equivalency between, uh, a tourist home? That we mostly believe is used less heavily than a residential, so it, I think what would be constructive here. Is if we had a more definitive, uh, equivalency between these uses, because right now. Because the permits are based on full-time, you know, bedroom use, that's the only thing we have, and beyond that. It, we get into this fuzzy, fuzzy, uh, standard and and I, I, to me, this is another a- aspect. If we were, you know, if we had all the resources for a day, I'd like to, I'd like, that would be something we should sort of figure out.
We have to assume, you know, when you got a bathroom, a septic capacity, when you address it by the number of bedrooms you have. We have no way to know occupancy that person's gonna have in it, in that business, and so we have to assume a hundred percent occupancy. So that's why we have to go by the health department standards of two, two per bedroom. And that, and that wasn't this strict fifteen years ago and twenty years ago, you're winning, you you you're going down the right path. You're leaving here with two options, it's great, so.
Okay.
Yeah, and I, and I just like, no, I didn't wanna make it.
You're doing.
I just figured that maybe, you know, there's the.
Yeah, your points are well taken, we have a motion and a second, and the motion was to send it on to the Board of Zoning Appeals with a recommendation for approval. Um.
Subject to the septic.
Subject to the septic and and.
Staff report.
Staff report, recommendations therein.
And we had a second.
And we had a second, who would, Mr. White? Yeah, thank you, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Alright, yeah.
Okay, alright, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, and we'll try to, Ms. Summers will try to get you the answer on the other permit, and so that might obviate the need for. Uh, further engagement with the Board of Zoning Appeals, um, but if that permit isn't there and is no longer valid, then it would be. This will go to the Board of Zoning Appeals, you should talk to Ms. Carter in advance of that, and then there will be a public hearing at the Board of Zoning Appeals, and thanks for coming out tonight.
Sounds fair, thank you all, very much.
Okay. Okay, now for some variety, um, we are now going to, uh, conduct a preliminary review. Of special use permit number twenty-one dash zero-nine dash zero-three, the Turner family, who we all know well. Tax map number thirteen dash ninety-four A, and this is a special use permit application for an accessory dwelling unit. And if Ms. Summers, you could just introduce this, and then the applicants are here.
Yep, thank you, um, they have requested, uh, special use permit for an accessory dwelling unit on the property, like they did at twenty-three fifty-three. Jericho Ridge, Lintill, pursuant to one seventy-three-six A and one seventy-sixty-two G. Um, the property is four point zero-five acres in size and it's owned agricultural. The proposed accessory dwelling unit will contain two hundred sixty-four square feet of living, which is detached from the main home. Um, Mrs. Turner wishes to live in place proximity to her son and daughter-in-law while being able to remain on the property. He doesn't, had, did not have any issues with the existing insurance. And the health department had no objections to this request at all.
Do either one of you wanna say anything in addition to her summary?
Yeah, further questions, yeah, I'm ready.
Okay, alright, um, anyone wanna jump in here on this application? Probably shouldn't have mentioned that, so.
I, I actually did not represent them, but I was the listing agent.
Okay. Okay.
And it's a, it's a, you know, it's a lovely home and it has this little cottage, it has this little cottage behind it that. Uh, it says in here it's within two hundred feet, I can't speak to that, but I think it probably is.
It is, okay, that's an important point.
As I remember, it was a small cottage with a little shed attached to it of of some sort. A garage, that's right, right, and and this garage is still there, it's just still the little apartment, the little. Right, uh, it's a good use for it, I don't see that, uh, it's been, it's been sitting there for a long time. Being used as some sort of a, either rental or or guest house or something, and I, I think, uh, for Ms. Turner to be able to live there certainly seems. Appropriate.
And thank you for operating your business in Rappahannock County, so we want as many of you to, to stay in the county as possible, so you can keep operating. Um, and we thank you, it's an important investment in the community, and you're processing things like apples. Comments, questions?
I, I mean, I, I, I hope this goes through, although I, I will vote against moving it ahead without a hearing, cuz I think it needs a hearing. Although I'm confident it will otherwise pass, and that, if I weren't confident, I would think twice about it, because this strikes me as being so appropriate. Um, and I, I think it, it serves so many, um, so many good purposes, uh, to have. To allow the property to be used, to ha- keep a family on the property and and senior living, you know, affordable living offer, uh, options. And to stay on in your home base, um, there just really are a lot of, a lot of positives about this. So I, I support very much the, um, the application itself.
Now, do you wanna say anything? No, okay.
And, um, here, I can say maybe I might have a conflict of interest, I guess, because.
Okay.
Rent to them, so, I, I mean, it doesn't seem like a real controversial thing.
Well, why don't you step aside then, on this vote, I think that's not a bad idea, let's err on the side of caution, also with the question about your Board of Zoning Appeals position. Okay, so you're gonna recuse yourself from the vote?
I'm gonna recuse myself.
Okay, um, does anyone wanna put forward a motion on, on this SUP? Application?
I'll make a motion that we, uh, send the, uh, creation on, uh, forward with a recommendation, uh, for approval.
To the Board of Zoning Appeals, okay, thank you, is there a second for Mr. Henry's motion? Mr. Kohler, any further discussion? And Mr. Sharp, stand aside, please. Okay, all those in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed?
Nay.
Okay, so that should be a.
No, I didn't mean that, I didn't.
It should, it should be a five to one vote for recommendation for approval. And Mr. Sharp, for the record, recused himself because he is the landowner of. The, the business, yeah, great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
So, so on to the Board of Zoning Appeals. Um, if you really wanna say it's, I wanna say it's really gonna get good now, but I can't promise it. Thank you. Okay, great, um, thanks everyone for your patience, I believe we're now down to something that we don't see come along that often. Um, and I was surprised, actually, this is a special use permit application for a kennel slash dog training center. I guess off the top of my head, I thought it would be a special exception permit, which would go to the Bo- a Board of Supervisors, but I've confirmed in the ordinance. It is a special use permit process involving the Board of Zoning Appeals, and we appreciate your patience, we know we've covered a lot tonight already. Um, so this is SUP number twenty-one dash zero-nine dash zero-five Wagner, tax map forty-two dash eighteen. A kennel slash dog training center, Ms. Summers, and if you could speak into the microphone, please. She extended the cord, so it should be easier, there you go, thanks.
Thank you. Alright, Mrs. Wagner has proposed to operate a dog training center, um, a kennel pursuant to our code. One seventy-three-six, uh, E and one seventy-sixty-six A. She proposes to construct a new building for dog training and office, parking area and exercise yard. The proposed hours of operation are Monday through Friday, ten AM to seven PM, and Saturdays, ten AM to three PM, closed on Sundays. It is proposed for group and private dog training workshops, a walking trail, agility area and a dog park. There will be no breeding or overnight boarding of animals on this property. Um, the health department, um, has commented, um, and at this time, they don't have any objections. But prior to construction, a law on septic construction permit application will need to be made, uh, VDOT has no objections at this time. As they feel that their entrance, um. Meets the proposed use for their requirements.
Great, and Ms. Wagner, would you like to say a few words? And I've got a dog ready for you whenever.
Um, hi, I'm Charlotte Wagner, I've been a permanent resident of the county for the last nine years, um, I've been a professional dog trainer for seventeen years. Um, when I moved back here, I started off on the road and then we had a brick and mortar, actually in Warrenton. And after a couple of years of being in a brick and mortar in Fauquier County, I was like, well, I moved here because I wanna live in Rappahannock and I wanna bring something to this community. Um, so like Ms. Summers said, what we're looking to build basically is a couple of Morton-style structures, um, that will be insulated to provide a sound barrier. Um, if you actually look, I think you guys have the actual business plan document, we are well within the distances and the lines. Um, that are required for adjoining properties, I did take the liberty a couple of weeks ago to walk, um, door to door to all the adjoining neighbors. Those that are across the street, um, as well as going along Forest Grove Road, I had one concern, um. By a lady, um, named Alice, who is across the street, and she had taken the liberty to email me. And upon responding to her and addressing her concerns, primarily it was about barking, um, because she operates a horse-riding facility opposite of the road. Um, and yes, I told her we are not running a, a boarding kennel, we basically have people come, they come for an hour or two, we work with them and their dogs. And then we send them on their way, um, we are very much, um, advocates of training the human to train the dog, rather than just train the dog. So we're not looking to kind of do a large kennel operation, um, there will be nobody living on the premise permanently, so it will be open by appointment only. Um, within those hours of operation, we will have a gate in the front, so that people cannot access the area. Um, and some type of a membership or or class tuition will be required for people to come. Um, and, uh, once I spoke with Alice about her concerns, she actually said that she has a coordinator that she'd like to sign up for classes. So, we didn't have any issues with any of the neighbors, everybody was very receptive, and even the neighbor who, whose driveway is opposite of where we would like to put our entrance. Offered her electrical post for us to use, which is really sweet, um, so, um. Yeah, we're just looking to bring something to the county, something that's not gonna be obtrusive, there's a lot of trees, it is a wooded lot, and there's images actually in the report as well. You won't be able to see the facility from the actual road, so we're not obscuring any views, um, I do wanna do light-sky approved lighting. So that we don't cause any light pollution, um, and really, we just want a place for people to like happily and safely exercise their pets and train their dogs.
Great, and, um, thank you for proactively going out and talking with your neighbors, that goes a long way in, in these kinds of, uh, applications. So, thank you for doing that, um, while Ms. Wagner's at the microphone, does anyone have any questions or comments? That she might be able to respond to or address?
Yeah, I'd like to ask a couple things, thank you, thank you, Rick Kohler here, um. So there'll be no boarding of any kind here, I mean, I know it states that, but during the day, also, will dogs be boarded in one section? While other people are working with dogs, what will be?
So like, I've always brought my personal dogs to work, so part of the office building will be indoor crates, we're not gonna have outdoor runs. Um, to be honest, I can't stand barking, and like, the biggest thing for me is I hate nuisance behaviors. So staff members may be bringing dogs, but primarily, our focus for the clientele is that we have the owners come. So that they can learn how to work with their dogs and then they leave, so for you, if you, if you come for obedience sessions, you book a forty-five minute session, you come with your dog. We train you, and then you're off on your way, um, we, we, we're a very small staff, it's me full-time and one other full-time staff member will probably have to hire a part-time receptionist. But other than that, our capacity wouldn't even allow for that.
So your capacity would be?
We have twenty, twenty people coming in and out max per day.
Per day, and are each one, each one, I presume would be an individual class?
Some are individuals and some are groups, so individuals, for instance, we do kind of customize programs for individuals for specific issues. Then you would come with your family and your dog, in our group setting, we have up to five dogs, which is our maximum. So you're looking at a maximum of five or six cars coming in for a group class and then going out.
And, uh.
And we teach about three to four, uh, three group classes per evening maximum, and then we do two or three private lessons. So our workload on average clientele-wise is about five hours of people going in and out.
Okay, and the training is inside the building or?
Inside and outside, so we will have an outside agility yard, just because it requires more space for, for agility, it's about five thousand to eight thousand square feet. So we're going to put up no climb horse fencing, so that the dogs can't scale it either, um, at, for our exercise area, which, yeah, we do have pictures for that. Um, so that will be for outdoor classes, and then we'll also have indoor classes where we have a further sound barrier with insulation.
Okay, and it goes, you have hours of, I believe, eight to seven or?
Um, no, our hours.
Morning hour is, but till seven in the evening during the.
Yeah, it's up to seven o'clock during the week, up to three o'clock on Saturdays and no further, so ten AM to seven PM during the week. And then on Saturdays from ten AM to three PM.
And is there a particular reason you would go as late as seven?
Yes, because most people work nine-to-five jobs, and unfortunately, the majority of our clientele requests that we provide the service after hours. So our class de- schedule is usually like five-thirty PM and six-thirty PM to accommodate the, um, the regular nine-to-five crowd.
Right, okay, and does the application say anything, well, that's commercial anyway, it's down shielded lights and things like that, but, um. I think, uh, if you've talked to the neighbors, that's great, uh, I have no further questions at this time.
Okay, anyone else?
So we're leaving the majority, the only area, because I like the natural shade and it's not very densely wooded. So the nature trails are going to be with the existing trees, I'm actually going to be hiring a survey company out of Noakesville. Who is going to be doing a lot of the clearing, and they will actually survey the trees and give me advice on which ones to keep and which ones to move. Um, my goal is to preserve the majority of the integrity of the woodland. Yep.
I think your slogan should be, I hate barking, that.
Excuse me?
Your slogan, your company slogan should be, I hate barking.
Yeah, I hate bark, I hate bark, I hate jumping, I hate barking.
I was on with our dog all day today, I hate it too, um.
I have one, one question, um, I, it's probably in here somewhere, sorry if I've overlooked it, but are you the contract purchaser of the property?
Yes, so we currently have a ratified contract on the property, um, and then they gave us a sixty-day study period. In order to ensure that this, um, is a viable purchase, um, and I wanna make sure that before I commit and sign on the contract. That this is viable, due diligence.
Very thorough application.
Yes, I do appreciate. Yes, I do appreciate the specificity of the application.
I, I, I will add to that. It's one of the best applications I've seen come forward, and we've seen some pretty, pretty careful, good applications. Um, so I appreciate that, and if this does move forward tonight for a, a hearing um for the BCA, then I would hope that we'd include a, a recommendation for that, that all the conditions you've specified in your application would become part of the permit, um, because they're very good. Um, and I, to me, this seems like a perfect use for an agricultural property and a perfect use in our county, um, to attract people in from other areas also, and then they go home.
And like, that's the thing, like, we have Donna down the road, which is awesome, so we can collaborate with her, and like, I think especially a lot of people are concerned about a dog park, cause we don't have one in the area. But my biggest concern from a training behavior side is like that they're not supervised. So if we're able to educate people while giving them a platform to like hang out with their dogs, it's great.
Yeah, I, I, I think this is, it's lovely. Um, I also would suggest, um, uh, that, um, that uh, that you have a um, a tree plan, so that they would just know what trees you're, you're taking down.
Yeah.
I, I don't think that's gonna be a problem with the way you presented this at all.
Yeah, no, I definitely want it surveyed. There's some really big trees in there, like, they're beautiful, so definitely like, we're only going to clear what we need to and some of the smaller trees, definitely.
So what would happen if you discontinued the business? Would you try to sell it to somebody else?
So yes, so we're not signed up as a nonprofit. We are structured as a business. Um, with that said, my colleague, who is my full-time staff member, I'm actually um going with her to train other dog trainers, and we do actually offer a dog trainers academy, so that eventually when I am no longer in possession or able to run the business, then they would basically take it over. Um, whether that be future staff members or whatever. For me, I really want this to be a cornerstone, not just for like pet owners, but also for future dog trainers. So this, I, I hope the program surpasses me.
And so you never see the possibility of wanting to board dogs?
No, I don't have the staff. I live in Flint Hill, um.
And no successor?
Not at this time.
So how are you gonna take title? Is this LLC, a corporate, or individual?
Oh, so my company is an LLC, um, but the property itself is going to be owned by myself and my father.
Individual?
Yes.
Okay. So you're gonna have, you have an appointment every forty-five minutes?
Um, we have an appointment every hour on the hour for forty-five minutes.
Exactly. One appointment or two?
That's one.
One, one. So.
And that could be either a group class or an individual, individual one-on-one lesson.
What's a group class?
A group class is when up to five dogs attend a session together. So the two programs that we have are one-on-one tuition, where if you have specific concerns, agendas, or goals with your dog, we'll work with you and customize a program. It's kind of like private tuition or getting a tutor versus having a group class, where if you wanna teach your dog basic obedience, like sit-down stay, how to walk on a leash, it might be you with four other participants in a group class learning how to do it.
So your hours of operation are?
Ten to seven.
Ten to seven.
And ten to three on Saturdays.
So you could have four or five group sessions a day?
Um, no, because we split our time between privates and groups, so our max right now that we're doing, and we are currently renting a space in Warrington, is we do a maximum of three group classes and then up to two privates. So our workload on average is five.
This group session of five dogs could be five different owners.
Yes.
So you could have back-to-back for three hours, five different cars coming in every hour?
Yes.
And have you looked at VDOT?
Yes, I actually met with Randy Norris on October twenty-third, and I also gave him the exact copy that you guys have here. And he said that based on the traffic and because we also have them staggered out, um, that it should be absolutely no problem with the entrance and sightlines and stopping lines.
Did the point of these group sessions come out in detail and your discussions?
Yes, yes. And he said, well, it's no different, quote-quote, um, it's no different than like teenagers having a bunch of friends come over in terms of volume.
Every day?
Yeah, that was Randy.
You know, it's so technical.
I know, isn't it? I was like, uh, okay.
We never get, we never get free.
Well, I asked him, I'm like, does it need a commercial entrance? And he's like, right now, a personal entrance is absolutely appropriate, as long as your berth is a minimum of fifty-two when you start it and taper it. But that if our volume were to change, that at that point, we would have to extend to a commercial. But at the current flow of, on average, um, twenty people, it shouldn't be a problem.
Is your insurance gonna be directly across from the neighbor with the riding arena?
No, and that's one thing that she was concerned about in the email. Um, no, it's going to be further down. Um, I don't have the lady's last name. Her first name is Betty. Um, and it is two doors down.
Down the way from the intersection with Grove.
So if this is the, if this literally is the intersection, and here's Forest Grove and here is Richmond Road, the horse entrance is actually here near the tip of the property, okay? So it's all the way back here. Our entrance is here.
Could you perhaps show us on that?
Oh, yeah.
Here's a big map.
Here's the map. So, um, this is the corner between Forest Grove Road, okay, the back of church with the red roof is over here. The horse riding arena is right here, right at the cusp at the edge of the property. We're actually gonna be way further up. It's about three hundred and some feet from the corner to meet the VDOT requirements. There is an existing road there, actually. Randy did find it when we went through the brush. Um, this is exactly opposite of a neighbor's house, and that's the neighbor who wants to use for electrical. They have some issues. But no, the riding arena is way further down the lot. And when I told her that, she was like, oh, that's really not a problem.
So not to sound like a broken record here, and I apologize for that, but nonetheless, I think it's a great application, but I do think that even more than tourist homes, this is a very different kind of use and probably should justify a public hearing. Um, so I would hope we would go that route um tonight, but I do think it's a good application.
Unless other commissioners have fur- further questions, I'm prepared, since I think this is in my district. Anybody else have anything? So I, I appreciate all the commentary. I do think because this is a slightly unusual one, and I think the applica- that this is one where the details of the application are very likely to allay what will be a lot of knee-jerk reaction to this otherwise. I do think uh scheduling this for a public hearing would be the appropriate next move. And I also agree that if we move forward with this, I agree with Ms. Ishi's point, that it would be important for us to include the the meaningful specifications of the application as the, as conditions in the permit, cause there are a lot of details here that I think mitigate of what might otherwise be a bit more of a, of a problem to the community. So with those thoughts in mind, I would move this, that we uh schedule a public hearing at our next regular meeting.
Cause anyone wanna second that motion?
I'd second that motion.
Uh, Mr. Henry, beat you to it.
Okay.
I heard him first.
Okay.
Speed of sound. Um, okay, any further discussion? I wanna thank you for your application and your very cogent presentation. Um, and I have full confidence that you'll stop my dog from barking someday once you're, once you're operating.
Well, it's there.
Oh, you know where to find me.
Um, great, so it's a motion and a second to schedule us for a public hearing before the planning commission at our October regular meeting. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Thanks very much, and thanks for your patience and enduring a, oh, lengthy agenda, so, thank you. All right, um, I believe we've gone through all of the applications. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, great. Um, at this time, I would entertain a motion to adjourn uh our regular meeting. Thank you, second. All those in favor, say aye. Aye, thank you.